Evening, everyone. Welcome to Portland City Hall. This is the evening session of the Portland City Council. And today is May 10, 2018. So we've got a couple of things on our agenda. First of all, we are convening. And as the Prosper Portland Budget Committee, when we're done with that, then we'll move on to public testimony for the budget overall. But we have a legal requirement to do the Prosper Portland piece. First, it shouldn't take us more, I would guess, than 15-ish, 20 minutes, max. When we complete that, I want to just give a brief overview of what is in the final proposed budget. It has changed. We took public testimony for a couple of evenings. I recognize many of you were there, so there have been some changes. I've had the chance to talk to my colleagues on the city council, and collectively, we've worked on a few modifications. I want to share some of those with you, and then we'll just jump right into public testimony. So without further ado, I'm going to ask Andrew Scott. Where is Andrew? Sorry? I just need him to read the code of conduct. In the absence of Andrew, I'll just summarize the code of conduct. People who come to testify at the microphones will have differences of opinion with you. Everybody gets equal access to the microphones. Let's everybody treat everybody with respect, whether you agree or whether you disagree. We don't shout, we don't yell, we don't clap. Thumbs up if you love what you're hearing. Thumbs down if you don't like what you're hearing. That suffices, we can see that. If you are a lobbyist, we need to know that, under council rules. If you disrupt people's testimony, aside from being kind of mean because you're robbing them of their opportunity to have a voice, if you interrupt, you will be asked to stop. And if you don't stop, you will be asked to leave. And if you're asked to leave and you don't leave, then under rare circumstances, we have to have you arrested for trespassing. We don't like doing that. So let's all just be respectful of everybody, and let's make this worth everybody's while. We've had some really good hearings in here over the last couple of weeks and out in the community, and let's continue that. So without further ado, we are now convened as the Prosper Portland Budget Committee. Carla, could you please call the role for the Prosper Portland Budget Committee?
Fish, Saltzman, Udaley.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here. And at this point, we'll turn it over to the Prosper Portland staff.
We'll just call the role in testimony. Looks like we're just doing the role and then testimony.
Oh, you just want to go right to the testimony on Prosper Portland? Very good. How many people do we have signed up?
I show four people. Lori Boyson, Janet Labor, and we'll go with Glossia Parath.
Very good. Two minutes each. Name for the record, please. We don't need to know anybody's address. Just name for the record. Thank you.
My name is Lori Boyson. I provide business outreach for the transit project for Apano and the Business Outreach Program at PSU. I want to thank council for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm here to ask you to reconsider Prosper Portland's $350,000 Division Street Business and Community Outreach Support Budget Item Number ZD02. This budget item is part of the fulfillment of the Memorandum of Understanding for the Division Transit Projects Locally Preferred Alternative, which was ratified by city council in 2016 and signed by three City of Portland bureaus in May 2017. Budget Item ZD02 directly addresses the economic development and business mitigation portion of the MOU and provides for business and community outreach, business technical assistance, as well as a small business mitigation loan fund. Recent activities lead me to wonder if this small budget item was overlooked. The city's budget fully funds PBOT's Outer Division Safety Project construction costs, and more recently, you allocated $6 million in SDC funds to fill Trimet's construction budget gap on the transit project. Yet the human element of business and community outreach, business technical assistance, and a loan fund is missing. We know East Portland has a diverse population. I'm here to tell you the business environment is equally as diverse. In the past four months, I've connected with 182 independent businesses east of 205, and 40% of those business owners use English as a second language. This proves these business owners serve the diverse community who lives there. Budget Item ZD02 supports these businesses and serves to preserve the fabric of this diverse community. If the city can find $6 million to fund Trimet's construction costs, it should be able to find a few hundred thousand dollars for the community development aspect of this project. Community groups negotiated with you on the MOU in good faith. Please honor that agreement. Benjamin Franklin wisely said, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." Please provide that ounce of prevention and fund this project.
Thank you for your testimony.
How much is it?
It's $350,000.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for this opportunity. My name is Glossia Martin Parath. I am an immigrant and also work as a business advisor for the Business Outreach Program at PSU, and have had the honor to serve the business East Portland community, supporting them to prepare to mitigate the impact that construction will have into their businesses as PBOT and Trimet begin the safety and transit project in East Portland. As my colleague from Apano said, I'm here to ask you to reconsider Prosper Portland's $350,000 Division Street Business Community Outreach Support Budget Item ZD02. Immigrant refugees and other underrepresented families clustered in the Outer Division area to form their community, a home away from home. There, they invested not only money, but all of their resources. They only survived the transition to this country and strongly contribute to Portland's thriving economy because they built businesses that support their culture, and losing their businesses will affect the entire community and not only them individually. These businesses pass on from generations to generations and without support to keep their businesses thriving and open. Generations will be impacted. Impact their businesses directly impacting and disrupting their thriving culture in Portland. The city's showing support by funding the Trimet and PBOT projects. Excluding the ZD02 package will be a disservice for this community. The last several transit projects always had the funds to support the businesses to mitigate the impact of construction. And why is this any different? It only represents 2% of the amount you already invested. Do you want to be responsible for the closure of these businesses and the breakdown of their communities? Where are they going to go next? Please reconsider. Please fund the Budget Item ZD02. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. My name is Janet Labar. I'm the President and CEO of Greater Portland, Inc. I am here this evening as a member of the Council of Economic Advisers, or CEA, a group that Mayor Wheeler has convened since last year. As business education and community leaders, we've been working earnestly with the city through Prosper Portland and Work Systems, Inc. to understand, debate, and recommend strategies and programs to both maximize the opportunities associated with economic growth and ensure more access and inclusion to these opportunities for underrepresented populations. The CEA's work aligns well with Greater Portland 2020, the Regional Economic Development Plan that GPI convenes that aims to put the Portland-Vancouver metro on a path to achieving economic prosperity for all. In February, the CEA, in partnership with Prosper Portland and Work Systems, Inc., recommended $900,000 in funding to support the following three areas. First, economic growth and equitable job creation. Second, access to capital for women and minorities. And third, youth workforce development training. I'm pleased that funding in the mayor's budget has been identified to support specific programs in these three areas, specifically the Small Business Growth Program, Small Business Technical Assistance, and the expansion of Mercatus and My People's Market. I am most excited about the traded sector-inclusive business growth program that will establish an innovation fund for grants to small businesses to support equity in hiring practices through public benefit agreements. Additionally, this program will fund internships for underserved youth. These are important and critical programs, but cannot be implemented on the shoulders of government alone. The CEA identified the need for support, participation, and leadership from the private sector, and I know that Mayor Wheeler made this call to action in his State of the City remarks. My professional mantra is economic development is a team sport and public-private partnerships are a proven approach. I respectfully request your consideration to fund these programs in the mayor's budget as they relate to the CEA proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks, all three of you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Was there one more, Carla?
Yes, the last person is Jenny Glass.
Pretty sure I saw Jenny earlier today. We have some folks upstairs. Do we have any of the overflow rooms open tonight? So it might take her just a minute. There you are.
I couldn't get in.
No worries.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Jenny Glass. I'm the Executive Director at the Rosewood Initiative. Rosewood Neighborhood in East Portland has been under-resourced for too long, and we're grateful to you all for the investments that you are making and the progress that we're making towards equity. One of the ways that you're supporting equity is through Prosper Portland's Budget for the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative. This program doesn't get enough credit for the impact that it's making in Rosewood and in other struggling communities across the city. It's provided us with operational funding to grow into a strong organization that's serving the Rosewood community in so many ways. Our work and our impact is realized because we have solid, ongoing support from the city through Prosper Portland, as well as Portland Parks. I'm here today to ask you for support of two ad packages put forth by Prosper Portland to increase staff funding for each MPI and to add workforce navigators in Rosewood and St. John's. The investments will have a huge return in our communities and in the city. We need workforce navigator positions in Rosewood and St. John's. This model has proven effective in Colley, 42nd, Jade, and Division Midway, and it's time to expand this service to the entire MPI network. The Rosewood Neighborhood has nearly twice the unemployment rate as the city average, and we need dedicated specialists to help neighbors find and keep jobs. We can't do this without a workforce navigator. I know that you're all deeply concerned with equity and about the housing crisis in Portland, and I know that you're committed to solving these problems. The housing crisis is a symptom of economic system failure. Rosewood neighbors need assistance finding and maintaining employment so that they can maintain their housing, and we can have safe, prosperous communities in East Portland. I can share with you story after story of families in Rosewood that have lost their housing because of their inability to pay rent. Supporting workforce navigation and community economic development is a strategy to impact the stability of the city in an upstream way. Rosewood's not experiencing the benefit of the economic boom in the city of Portland, and it's time that you all, our electeds, step in and invest in the most vulnerable communities in Portland. Thank you for your service, and thank you for your continued commitment to equity in Rosewood and in East Portland through the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative.
Jenny, do you have a number of the ask, and also how much is it?
Yes, I have one of the numbers, and I was really quick trying to get the other number, which I don't have. So for workforce navigators, it's 250,000. And for the MPI additional staff package, I believe it's someone from Prosper Portland here. I can't remember how much it is.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
And does that conclude testimony, then, for Prosper Portland?
That's all who signed up.
Very good. So the Budget Committee of Prosper Portland is therefore continued to Wednesday, May 16, at 3:00 PM in council chambers to take action to approve the Prosper Portland budget. So we are now done with Prosper Portland. We are now convening the City of Portland Budget Hearings, and there is a budget statement that I'm required to put into the record. It is lengthy, so I am not going to read it into the record. However, there are printed copies available here. It will be on the website tomorrow, and I'm just going to give you a few brief highlights that I think address some of the questions that people have raised during prior public testimony on the budget. First of all, with regard to homeless services. We are making record investments in homeless services. It is an increase from 10% over last year, actually 11%. We are making record investments in homeless prevention, in emergency shelter to keep people out of the elements, in transition from shelter and the street into housing, into services that help people to get off and stay off the street, including mental health services, addiction services, job training, and other opportunities. And I think one of the most interesting and exciting parts of the homeless services budget is that we are making a significant new and record investment in the transition between shelter and housing. And we've been told that that's been a significant gap for the chronically homeless population that I think everybody here is aware continues to grow on our streets, and it's a serious issue. And therefore, I believe the budget needs to reflect that, and so the final proposed does that. Some of you were here for community centers. I still expect the Parks Bureau to come forth with a strategic plan focused on community centers, future capital investments in those centers, and how we are going to pay for that. But if you are here tonight because you want to save your community center, you get to go home, if you so choose, because all of the community centers are restored in the final proposed budget. They all have ongoing funding. So they are not up for consideration for reduction. They are not up for consideration for cuts, at least so far as the proposed budget goes. You may wish to stay if you would like to make a statement and make sure that the city council supports that move. But, you know, I'll just be honest, I haven't heard anybody say they don't. Commissioner Fritz?
I just want to add, and also, the funding is also there for the Vision Plan, so that we don't want you to go home and not come back. So we will need to have a discussion, and when I say "we," I mean we, the city. The mayor is currently the Parks Commissioner, and he will reassign the bureaus next week. But we all, as Portlanders, need to talk about what services do we want in parks and how do we want to pay for them. And so the mayor's budget does fund the process to do that. And so the Parks Bureau will be getting those invitations out over the summer, and that's a conversation which will be difficult and which we hope you will participate in, and so that we're not backed this time next year in the same kinds of situation. But thank you to everybody who came out.
In addition, there will be new revenues in this budget through multiple sources. We will be bringing an ordinance to the city council around commercial trash hauling rates. As I think everybody here is aware, there is an increase in the business licensing tax from 2.2% to 2.6%. That raises about 15.3 million of ongoing general fund support for the budget. In terms of the housing, we're currently investing in more than 700 newly affordable housing units that are currently constructed or will be completed in 2018. By the end of 2019, we're actually going to nearly double that to an additional 1,322 units that is supported through this budget. Just by way of a benchmark, that will be five times more than the amount of affordable housing that was generated in the year prior to my arriving. We are committed to the Office of Rental Services. This budget will allocate to a little over $2 million to the establishment of the Office of Rental Services. It creates a rental registration system. It'll provide quality data on the rental market, including rent increases, eviction, security deposit data, and more. Policing, this is always a controversial issue. I have been very clear that I expect the Police Bureau to be more responsive to the kinds of needs that are currently on our streets today. That is why we are making record investments around mental health through substantial new investments in the behavioral health unit. We are increased, well, I'll explain that in a minute. We are also doubling the capacity of our partnership with Central City Concern through the Service Coordination Team. There are currently six beds that are available. We are increasing that to 12 beds that will be available. Homeless advocates in the community asked that the Police Bureau include a position specifically designed with somebody with lived experiences to help advise the Police Bureau on policy, on tactics, on interactions with the homeless community. This is an important issue. We are funding that position. There have been lots of calls for additional training, particularly implicit bias training and de-escalation training. That training is included in this budget. Finally, accountability is very important. There have been a couple of audits that were released recently that suggested a lack of data collection, a lack of data transparency, and a lack of accountability. I have therefore included in the budget data analysts and internal auditors. And in addition to that, I have fully funded the auditor's request for an additional complaint auditor. So if people make complaints against the Police Bureau, there will be additional capacity. I believe it's doubling that capacity, but at least it adds a completely new person dedicated to that particular duty. There will be more officers to reduce response times and to reduce overhead spending. When we fund the Police Bureau on overhead, that takes general fund dollars away from other services. So there is a staffing imbalance, and I intend to address it. I also want to be very clear. This is my first budget as mayor. The last one was a carryover from the prior administration. I have committed to making our bureau more responsive, more accountable. I brought in a leader-in-chief outlaw who I think could partner with me to do that. This is just the first step, and I hope that you will give me the room to actually continue to demonstrate my commitment to being responsive and accountable and relevant and responsive to the community that we serve. So I think I will stop there, because really, I want to hear from all of you. I do want to say one other thing, because I heard some people hissing, and again, I'd really rather, you know, we'd buy just thumbs up or thumbs down. I can see you up there, too. By the time somebody living on our streets who is struggling with mental health issues is having an interaction with a police officer, our community has already failed that individual. And I want to be really clear about that. There's a lot more that we need to do upstream. And I would go so far as to say, our nation, and our state, and our community, while there's a lot of really good people doing amazing work here, both in terms of clinical delivery of services and advocacy on behalf of mental health, I think we all know that we are the embarrassment of the industrialized world when it comes to how we treat our fellow residents who struggle with mental health. So rather than having you oppose me, I hope we can find ways to work together to address not only the needs at the street level where our first responders are working with those populations, but also work with us to help go upstream to address the issues around housing, around clinical support, around community outreach, around community behavioral health services. These are all, you know, it's not an either-or, it's sort of a both-and proposition. And I just hope we can find ways to work together on that in the near term and in the years ahead. Let's see, somebody handed me a note. So Andrew Scott, who's our Budget Director, has to do some housekeeping?
Housekeeping. Just really quickly, Mayor.
Good, okay.
You continue the Prosper Budget Committee to next week. I just want to make sure that we formally convened as the City of Portland Budget Committee, and then take the role one more time, because they are two separate bodies.
All right. We are convening as the City of Portland Budget Committee. Carla, please call the role.
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman. Udaley.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here. We've done it. Perfect. So we will now go into public testimony. Two minutes each. Folks, I hate to be the microphone cop, so please don't make me do that. Two minutes goes really fast. So get your biggest points out. Two minutes goes really fast, so get your biggest points out first. When the yellow light goes on, that means you have 30 seconds left. When the red light comes on, please stop. We find the microphones are really sensitive, so if you keep it about this far away, six inches or so, it tends to work the best. Thanks, everybody, for being here. We really appreciate it.
Okay, so first up, I'm going to read the last three numbers on your ticket stub, And then on deck, in the chairs behind us on the wall, we'll have 0-7-1-1-8-3 and 1-8-6. These numbers are being read in the auxiliary rooms as well. I'll read them one more time, 1-8-4-0-6-2-1-6-5, and then next, 0-7-1-1-8-3-1-8-6.
And there's a bit of a delay into the overflow rooms, just so you know, so the first people tend to take a little longer.
Would it be good to read another three so that we, would it be good to read another, the next three after that, so that people, because it's coming up from, down from downstairs, down from upstairs can take time, too?
Okay, next three, 1-1-5-0-5-9-1-2-2.
Let's, let's just, you've called nine, the first nine in whatever order works for me. Just state your name for the record. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Good evening, whoever would like to go first.
Sure, I can begin.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Wheeler and City Commissioners. My name is Adrian Cato. I am the youth organizer with Opel Environmental Justice, Oregon. The Youth Environmental Justice Alliance
(Cheering)
consists of high school-aged youth of color living predominantly in East Portland. They are committed to addressing the inequities that they identify in their communities. One of these inequities that we're seeing currently is the Youth Pass program. Beginning in 2015, YJSA began a campaign in order to permanently fund the Youth Pass program and expand the program to East Portland school districts. So the, the work around Youth Pass has an history of around 21 years. Sisters in Action for Power began the Youth Pass initiative in 1997. So with the advocacy of YJSA, Monoma Youth Commission, and their allies, they've achieved this expansion into East Portland. This past year alone, approximately 1,300 students in East Portland school districts have received access to free public transportation, getting them to and from school, involving their communities through volunteering, and allowing them to participate in sports and leadership clubs. While youth have won this victory and we're seeing the results, the Youth Pass program is still not permanently funded. Young people that are in this room that I organize with are called, year after year, to come here and talk about why this program is important. It is essential to have Youth Pass permanently funded. We're asking for its transitional year in this next year in order for us to find long-term funding within TRIMET. You're increasing the police budget to increase police officers to make more room for community policing, although it is clear to our communities that to our young people, that police presence does not mean safety. We want to see a fully funded, sustainable Youth Pass program for all youth in Portland, and we need your leadership in this.
Thank you.
My name is CJ Felix. I work for Outside Inn in downtown Portland. So I work with youth who are often affected by mental health. They are homeless, and I, in, in particular, I work with people who are transitioning off the streets and moving into our transitional housing program, where, you know, our goals are to help them become stable and work towards getting permanent housing, thinking about their goals and dreams, which is something that people are unable to do when they're just surviving day-to-day and trying to meet their basic needs. So, you know, my passion is really in seeing that people who are the most vulnerable, who have mental health issues, who are homeless, who are queer and trans, and people of color get the services that they need. And, you know, what I've seen from working in social work since 2010 is that the programs that we have now are underfunded. A lot of the time, they're understaffed. People are asked to work shifts, they don't normally work, they're working overtime. So I'm really interested in seeing the funding go towards these programs that we already have and new ones that could add to the services that we don't have yet. And, you know, I'm interested in how we can come to solutions to help people in a way that's not just adding to a punitive system that a lot of the time puts people more at risk.
I agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. Mayor Wheeler, you spoke today about record investment, or rather, spending in homeless services, and that's not the first time that we've heard this. In May of 2015, then Mayor Hales, Chair Kofori, and Mark Joln, now of the Joint Office of Homeless Services, they got together and they announced a record $33 million in spending that would cut homelessness in half by 2017. We all know what happened with that record investment. What have we got? We've got an increased number of homelessness. We spend over $250 million between the city and county since 2015. We have an extra layer of bureaucracy in the Joint Office of Homeless Services. We have deplorable conditions in our shelters, such as the Human Solutions Shelter on Stark that had to be closed down. We've created, in the city, a homeless industrial complex that spends money to nonprofits and doesn't get help in the hands of the people who need it, who are houseless. We have a lot of secrecy, some ineptness, a lot of debacles, some very serious lack of due diligence. What do we need? We need some mental health spending, I applaud you on that. We need some addiction services, I applaud you for that. We need some alcohol detox services. And not just alcohol treatment, alcohol detox, medical detox. I know, Commissioner Fritz, as a nurse, you would know how dangerous that is. I have the unique opportunity to have been asked to help a friend, and we spent three days getting up at 6 o'clock in the morning, going to Hooper, trying to get him a place to detox, before I put it on my credit card and we went out Tiger'd and found a place. We need, you should be able to walk in for free and say, "I need help," and we should be able to provide that. What we don't need, what we don't need is, we don't need people calling me a NIMBY because I want to be a part of the shelter in my neighborhood. The last person to call me that was you, Mayor Wheeler.
I have never used that term.
In an article, actually.
Excuse me, I have never referred to anybody as a NIMBY, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have to object to that. I have not. You show me the article.
Sure. It was in the Oregonian, it was about three weeks ago, and you said, "We need people to say, to stop saying 'not in my backyard.'" Well, to me, it means no irresponsible mayor bullying you guys. That's what NIMBY means to me. And, Mayor, I've sued you. You might be aware of that, because of the secrecy, because you have a list of potential shelter sites, and I fear that you and Joss and the county are placing them in marginalized communities. I fear that in that list, that you refuse to lease.
Well, it sounds like we'll argue it out in court.
We already have, it's in the hand of the judges.
But listen, what I said, what I said was, we can't, as a, and I remember, because it was in my State of the City speech.
Yes.
Just to be clear, what I said is, we can't say that we want to address the homelessness situation and get people off the streets, but say no to shelter in our neighborhoods. That's what I said.
Absolutely agree with you.
That is not calling you a NIMBY. Just be clear.
But, but that term is used to shut up statements, as you're doing now. It's, it's meant to end a conversation, not to be a part of a conversation. If you wanted me to be part of a conversation, you would announce December 18.
Nothing furthers a conversation like a lawsuit. All right, thank you. Appreciate your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Could we have your name for the record, please?
It's Tyler Bechtel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler.
Call some more numbers.
Please.
Folks who are waiting, please come on up. I'll say those again, 1-1-6-0-6-1-0-8-3-1-4-7-1-9-9-1-8-8, 1-1-8.
If I could also just say, if there are people here who have small children, or if you have a disability that requires you to leave sooner rather than later, please let the acting council clerk know, and we'll work you in sooner rather than later. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Kathy Reese, and I'm a committee member with Friends of Portland Net. The Neighborhood Emergency Team is overseen by the Portland Bureau of Emergency Management, also known as PBIM. Our members are volunteers who will assist during storms to protect the down-power lines around the city. We also serve in warming and cooling shelters, and we will respond during major earthquakes. Our members log our hours, and in 2017, the volunteers logged over 58,300 hours, which represents $1.4 million in savings, which is pretty cool. NET members would like to thank Mayor Wheeler and the entire commission for your support of NET and also of PBIM. Your support last year with allowing us to hire extra staff at PBIM has really helped our program, and it's allowed us to have extra training for those who want to become NETs, as well as giving additional training to those of us who already are NET members. We really thank you for that. Disaster falls hardest on those who are the most vulnerable and have the fewest resources. So we really hope to take our training into schools, neighborhoods that, especially those that are underserved, and communities of faith, so that they can better prepare themselves and their families for disaster. PBIM represents the smallest portion of the city budget, yet when a disaster strikes, PBIM will be one of the most visible on-site to help out. We would like to support Mayor Wheeler's proposal for PBIM during 2018, 2019. We really thank you for the support, and we look forward to growth for the bureau as well as for the NET program, and again, we thank you.
Thank you, and of course, we're always looking for volunteers.
Absolutely.
For the NET program. Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening.
Hey, good evening. Hello, I'm Susan Vlad, home with the Frog Ferry, and I'm here to introduce the concept of a passenger ferry service here in Portland, although, as we all know, it's about a 200-year tradition here, given that's how we typically got away around this community, looking to our native past. Obviously, there are a lot of challenges with surface transportation today, and we need an efficient, low-cost alternative. We're requesting $350,000, which will be matched with other funds, such as with ODOT that we have lined up, and other public and private sector entities. This has been a one-year effort to date, and we have 180 stakeholders. We have packets that we would like to hand out that outline a number of our supporters. The goal is to create a safe and sustainable river-friendly passenger ferry service to better connect people to people, and people again, with our river. This is a bold initiative that will take visionary leadership and collaboration. We are looking at 149 passenger, no-car ferry with bicycle storage. The 1.0 version is Vancouver to Portland. We have upwards of eight potential stops, east, west, through the river, and that could take us from Vancouver all the way down to Milwaukee, Oregon City, and Lake Oswego. This would be 600 people during commuter times, equating to 400 cars and more than two miles of traffic removed from our I-5. This service would serve all walks of life, because gridlock does not discriminate. Our model is a public-private partnership, which is shown to be globally in all major river cities that today have a passenger ferry service. And we are looking to your 2006 Willamette River ferry feasibility study. We have studied that extensively, and we meet the requirements: population growth, congestion, travel times, the wake and erosion mitigation. Thank you for your leadership and consideration.
Thank you. It's actually a really interesting concept. I'd like to actually talk more about that. Commissioner Fritz?
So, Mayor, I have a question. Do you have in your budget the Special Appropriation Grant Fund?
So we have $800,000 remaining in the Special Appropriation Grant Fund. We made grants for the Rose Festival, and there was one other, Commissioner Fish, do you remember what it was? Parks Foundation, thank you. So we still have $800,000.
So just so that everybody knows, that we have a process, the mayor has set up a process where there's a fund, and there will be a committee that will take applications for anything that's not in the budget, that is a kind of a one-time special project, that this, I don't know whether this would qualify for it or not, but that will be announced later. And kind of the thinking behind this was, it used to be that if you knew somebody on the council and you could get your request in early enough, then you could get your thing funded, and that, that's not fair, because
Right.
not everybody knows that they could do that. And so now, Mayor Wheeler has set up this process, so, and that's what people can, so if you're, and don't get what you want funded in the budget, that's possibly another avenue to ask.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Keith Guthrie, and I'm here as a member of the Portland Democratic Socialists of America. Mayor Wheeler's budget proposal uses Portlanders' real needs as a bargaining chip with business interests and grossly misrepresents Portland's priorities. This budget continues the downward trajectory of austerity, cutting funding for parks, parks, community centers, and youth transit passes, with no substantial investment in education, preschool, mental health services, or jobs programs, yet providing plenty of funding for more unwanted and unneeded police. We demand a budget that prioritizes the needs of the people to create a city where all can prosper and have their needs met. The mayor's budget proposes an increase in the business income tax from 2.2% to 2.6%. We believe that business tax increases need to be targeted at the top with increasing rates, and we reject the Portland Business Alliance's caveats that this tax is in lieu of a gross receipts tax in the future. We support the Portland Clean Energy Fund that will come to the ballot in November. We refuse to allow the BBA to hold our city hostage with these threats. Corporations will pay as much as we, the people, demand they pay. Additionally, despite the blatant violence and oppression exhibited by the Portland Police Bureau, Mayor Wheeler believes that the problem should be solved with more police, which he believes will cut down 911 response time. What he fails to consider is that a full third of the calls to 911 do not concern criminal activity and should be routed to train, capable, and fully-funded social service options that the city does not currently provide. We already know the devastating results of a poorly-trained, over-militarized force. We need to invest in our communities and mental health services, not in the police. As a first step towards supporting the people of Portland, we demand a local income tax on the wealthiest residents of the city. Our tax plan begins reinvesting in our city based on the simple metric, income. Our proposed income tax bracket begins at 2% on income in the excess of $250,000 or $500,000 for joint filers, and progresses up to 8% on the income in excess of $1 million or $2 million for joint filers. Renowned economist Mary Kings tells us a conservative estimate of the revenue produced would be approximately $114 million per year. City Council has a choice to make. We hope to see you have the courage to stand up for the whole city of Portland and not just the wealthy few.
Just, and again, I'd encourage people to read the budget statement when it's online. I appreciate your comments. There are actually substantial investments that we make around education, the educational environment, the support of the SUNS School Program through the parks, scholarship programs for activities for youth. Substantial new investments are included around workforce development with an intentional focus on communities of color and women, business owners, and entrepreneurs. So I just really encourage people to take a look at that stuff and let us know what you think. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next three, please.
I'll read some more numbers, 0-9-3-0-9-2-2-1-7, 2-0-4-0-5-8-0-8-6, and 0-8-5-2-0-3-0-7-0.
Good evening. Would you like to start?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Mia Callaway. I'm a sophomore at Parkrose High School and a member of the Youth Environmental Justice Alliance. I am here today to urge you to include the Youth Pass program and the city budget, in the city budget, for the 2018-2019 school year, specifically for East Portland school districts. In this implementation year, Youth Pass has benefited almost 1,300 students in East Portland. Your support of Youth Pass is urgent to the youth and city of Portland. Sisters in Action for Power began this work in 1997. That was before I was That was before I was even born. We have had to continually come back, year after year after year, to demonstrate that this program is necessary. If this program is not funded, I will be forced again to figure out how to pay, to ride the bus. This past year, I have been able to stay after school to participate in my school's GSA and get involved in making a change in my community through YASIA. We should not have to continually talk about why this program needs to be funded. We urge you to provide transitional funding and support for Youth Pass. Mr. Wheeler, you were at the launch of Youth Pass program in 2015. What happened to your support since then? If youth success is not a priority to you, please show us that this program is essential.
Thank you and I would like to respond to that because it's a fair question. So, people, the last person who testified suggested we have a transition year. I provided a transition year. That was last year. And I was very clear that the city would work with TRIMET and the school districts to find ongoing funding for the Youth Pass. It has not happened. And I don't know if it's because people didn't think I was serious or if they didn't feel that it was an urgent need. The Youth Pass will be funded because we have to allow kids a safe route to school. And I am counting on the school districts to step up and fund it as they are legally required under state law to do it. And if they won't, we will back into it through other means. But I think they would probably prefer, as a first strategy, to fund it as they are required to do under state law. Thank you for being here. I really appreciate it. Good evening.
Hello.
Excuse me. Again, folks, please, let's just try to be respectful of differences of opinion. You're going to hear lots of them. Let's not hiss. Thumbs down works. Thank you. Sorry.
Hello, my name is Abigail. I'm a community member and a student at Portland State University and the Chair of the PSU, Young Democratic Socialists of America. First, I'd like to thank City Council for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. On April 30th, Mayor Ted Wheeler proposed a budget for our city that prioritizes the rich and wealthy businesses' concerns. Mayor Wheeler's budget proposal sacrifices basic services and lacks a prioritization of education systems, childcare, mental health services, and jobs programs. As a community, we are demanding a budget that satisfies the needs of all community members and allows them to thrive. I recognize that there's been a proposal for a tax increase on businesses, but it is within the framework that Portland Business Alliance has mandated. This is not good enough. The city's budget is not meant to serve the wealthy few and the businesses of Portland. The budget needs to serve the many. Portland is currently in its wealthiest time of all history, yet income inequality is continually worsening due to a lack of investment in education, city jobs, public housing units, and other resources crucial to the well-being of our community. How can a city flourish if there's no funding for services like Youth Pass? If our population cannot attain an education, families being displaced without replacement, the proposed budget prioritizes graffiti removal and excess increase of police? This is unacceptable and inadmissible. How does Mayor Wheeler justify increasing police force in Portland when there is an ever-increasing violent and oppressive nature of the Portland Police Bureau? We are hiring more police officers and we reject the notion that services we depend on and we need to be pitted against each other. There is plenty of wealth in this city and we demand solutions from our leadership, beginning with a high-earner income tax on the wealthiest residents that would raise $114 million per year. We are calling on Portland City Council to publicly reject the mayor's proposed budget and insist on a budget that actually takes into consideration the hundreds of people who attended the city budget forums. Commissioner Udaley, at the first budget hearing, you said you weren't opposed to taxing the rich. And Commissioner Fritz, you said you recognized that we need to raise new revenue. We want to hear from where you stand on yet another austerity budget that prioritizes the wealthy over the needs of our city. Thank you.
This is actually not an austerity budget. The problem is, if you look at the numbers, again, if you look at the numbers when it comes out on the website, you'll see the numbers right at the bottom. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Barb Schwartz. I do not have a prepared statement. I just want to talk with you.
Thank you.
Hopefully not at you. I'm a board member of the Hillside Community Center. I heard your statements earlier this evening that the communities, all the community centers will be funded for the next two years, but according to Commissioner Fritz, there will be an assessment of basically how valuable the community centers are and which ones will be closed in the next budget cycle. I have lived literally across the street from Hillside for over 40 years. This is the third, maybe the fourth, time that Hillside Center has been threatened to be closed. It's inappropriate, especially at this time, you know, this economic time. The figures that you're getting and how much Hillside is being used are highly inaccurate. We heard that there were 400-plus unique users for the year. Well, I would certainly close a facility that was only used that little as well. That's not the case. If you go any time of the day and your assistant said that you would be happy to come in August and we will schedule that for you and Commissioner Fritz, if you would like to come on a separate time or at the same time, you are more than welcome to come, you will see that it is a thriving, lively community center. We have a preschool that has accepted students that literally have not been accepted any place in the city. We have a child who has a full-time assistant because that's what he needs. That child has no place to go in the city. There's another preschool in the community that is being closed down. If Hillside is threatened as well, it is going to be a disaster. After-school programming, which is coordinated with Chapman School, the kids come directly on the bus. Staff go down and meet the bus and get the kids across the street safely. If that disappears, we're going to have a major disaster. If the building closes, it's going to be a major hindrance to the community and will cause more problems than the $120,000 it might have cost this year to keep it open. The last two years, we were self-sufficient.
Yeah, very good. And just to be clear, what I'm looking for is a capital improvement plan and a strategic plan for the community centers. In other words, what are the capital maintenance needs? What are the costs? What kind of things do we need to be thinking about three, four, five, six years out and start the process of funding it?
To quickly respond to that, Hillside is part of the I-405 funds and we get capital fund improvements on a regular basis from them.
Fabulous.
To the tune of about $75,000 maybe every four years or so. The budget also included that the center needed $5 million of improvement, of maintenance. When we asked what that was for, we could not get an answer. We have no idea.
Okay. To be continued and I look forward to visiting.
To be continued for sure.
You bet.
And I'll see you in two years if I live that long.
Ms. Schwartz, well, actually, no, we're going to, so first of all, I've been to Hillside multiple times. My son's played basketball there and I know about the, I've enjoyed its services as well.
Come again.
I will. And I'm glad you've invited the mayor. It's not just Hillside and it's not just the small community centers. We're looking at the whole of what Portland Parks and Recreation does.
Yes, but Hillside's always at the bottom of that list.
No, well, it won't be in this process, so I encourage you to participate. And the funding is ongoing for right now and the process will be starting right very shortly.
Right, but I don't feel assurance that it will continue.
That's fair.
That's my message.
Yeah, that's a fair message. Thank you.
I also have a response.
Commissioner Udaley, sorry.
I'm absolutely committed to fighting for everyone to pay their fair share and we certainly know that large corporations and many wealthy people in our community aren't. That is why I support the Portland Clean Energy Fund despite threats from big business that they're going to mobilize against me in my next election. I guess they didn't notice that I didn't need their support the first time, but I'm going to ask you guys to come support, support me in that event. It's also why I supported raising the BLT, although I supported raising it higher than the 0.4% that's been settled on. And I'm definitely interested in the tax that you are suggesting, so set up a meeting with my office and let's start talking.
Good evening. Well, thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Appleberry of the Fulton Community Association and I'd like to thank you for saving Fulton and the other community centers. And my lovely assistant would like to give you a kiss.
Thank you, liability.
This is the...
Thank you. That's very kind of you.
Question is how many...
Come back because we don't have to listen to our community center testimony.
Question is, how many times are we going to have to do this? And this is the third time for Fulton. We know it's going to come up again and as Commissioner Fritz says, we all know that. We need to have a larger conversation. We are simply asking to be part of that. All of the three times up to now, we have been blindsided. We have been surprised by, we're going to close it. There seems to be, have been, a strong desire to close Fulton and it never was backed up by the money. We had proven that over the times. So I'm hoping with new leadership that maybe that mysterious desire to close Fulton will go away. We just ask to be part of the conversation from the beginning. We have solutions, we have smart people, and I have one idea. There is a $55 million excess in SDC income over the next five years that PP&amp;R doesn't have a place to put. Now, there seems to be, I am told, there's a gray area about whether that can be spent on capital improvements. And you shake your head, well, maybe we need to work at the state level. A community center that is saved is as good as one being opened. If you close Fulton, you lose something. If we can spend some SDCs on the capital improvements needed for long-term success at Fulton, then you have a community center that is otherwise not going to be there. So if we have to go to the state, let's go to the state. We will work with you, if you will work with us, on making this a solution that can apply to other facilities in Park and Rec.
So Mr. Appleberry, first of all, system development charges or impact fees on construction are to provide capacity where there isn't any. So then, we're not allowed to use them for maintenance and I think the people who don't have any services at all would be, would not support what you just said. That's why we're going to have a community discussion about the funding of Portland Parks and Recreation altogether. So, and that's why I mentioned it tonight, so you won't be blindsided. You're encouraged and we'll, obviously, we know who you are, where you are, with your advocacy, you'll be, whoever is the Parks Commissioner will be inviting the community to participate and I know you will.
Okay, I appreciate that. We would just want to be part of the conversation and we can continue about SDCs.
Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Dan Jaffe and I'm Associate Professor of Sociology at Portland State University. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Julia DeGraw, candidate for Portland City Council, Position Two. Tonight, she's participating in a candidate forum hosted by deaf community groups. She can't be here to deliver this herself. She writes, "I'm glad to see that community centers are no longer on the chopping block in this year's budget, but it's unacceptable that working families time and again have to fight to keep our community centers open. I'm also concerned that the mayor is still interested in using our limited resources to hire additional armed police officers. This money should go instead toward much-needed affordable housing and social services. Portland is booming for those at the top while the rest of us struggle just to make ends meet. This is why I propose a basic rights and social services tax, or BRAS tax. The BRAS tax plan will target the biggest multinational corporations, large developers, and the wealthiest households in a progressive fashion. As profits rise, so too will the obligation owed back to the community that helped that company or that individual thrive. The BRAS tax is a revenue plan tied to the funding of much-needed social programs that will benefit all Portlanders, especially those in the most marginalized and historically disadvantaged communities. The programs include: citywide tuition-free universal pre-kindergarten, massive expansion of public emergency transitional and affordable housing projects, mental health and addiction programs to replace a criminal justice approach to health problems. Some of the changes specifically proposed under the BRAS tax are: a city income tax with rising rates on the top 10%, 5%, 2%, and 1% of income earners; a citywide luxury tax on extravagant consumer goods and services; improving upon the NOVIC CEO tax; and exploring a developer linkage fee similar to the one in Seattle. It's time for Portland to finally reject the logic of trickle-down economics. Business-as-usual politics won't cut anymore. Portlanders want bold change that puts people first. It's time to get down to BRAS tax." Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners. I'm Fred Granham, the Executive Director of the James Beard Public Market. We have submitted a request to the city for funding to provide, for pre-development funding for the market as we work in collaboration with OMSI to help activate the Central East Side.
Fred, when did that request come in?
That came in directly through the mayor's, to the mayor's office in the course of that budgeting process. But out of respect of the challenges that the commission faces in dealing with the funding, we recognize that we've been directed and encouraged to go to the Special Appropriations and I speak quickly here tonight to recognize that we will do so and respect the challenges that the commission deals with in funding everybody's and the challenges and the projects that we have going on in the city. But with that, I want to underscore that the James Beard Public Market will be designed to be a market for all. It will be a market that we anticipate will be built on the campus at OMSI in collaboration with the programs that OMSI is organizing. We anticipate having 50 to 60 vendors onsite. The makeup of those vendors will reflect a diversity of tastes, races, ethnicities within the marketplace and will provide economic programs for job training within the food industry, as well as educational programs and opportunities for everyone to participate so that everyone in our community is able to come to the public market, feel welcome, and participate, and bring their friends and neighbors to enjoy the bounty of our state. I will relinquish the rest of my time, I simply want to acknowledge our respect for the challenges you face and our commitment to bring this project to fruition in this coming year, as this started back in the 1990s within the halls of the city when Ron Paul started this project. It's now our challenge to bring it into fruition and we look to your support in the months and years ahead to make it happen.
Fred, what was the amount that you put in for?
We put in for $200,000 for pre-development expenses for this cycle.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Granham, so in addition to the Special Appropriations process, I want you to know I've also forwarded that to Prosper, since they'll be working with OMSI on the redevelopment.
Yes, your staff reported that and I appreciate that support. Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here, all three of you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm going to read a few more numbers. We have 143-208-108, followed by 084-162 and 151.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Julia Barron. I've worked in public health for a decade and I'm also a homeowner in Goose Hollow. And Mayor Wheeler, I appreciate your comments regarding police. I am here in support of increasing our public safety with more police officers. I reside on the south side of Highway 26 of the Goose Hollow neighborhood and I am here as a concerned citizen in regards to my safety and that of my neighbors. This area of Goose Hollow is unique. There's only one...
Excuse me, excuse me.
...roadway available to come and go from our homes.
Please stop interrupting people's testimony.
Which is via the underpass of Highway 26, also known as the Tunnel, and a path to PSU downtown, which originates 10 feet from the south side of the tunnel. Using these routes in the course of our normal daily activities puts our lives in danger. The city encourages walking. Do you live there?
Again, folks, I'm not taking your time. I'll stop the clock. I said right up front that we expect people to treat other people in this chamber with respect. We are all part of the same community and we do not have to agree on everything. Everybody is entitled to their time at this microphone and when you interrupt, you are taking other people's ability to speak away from them and that is fundamentally not fair. Thumbs up if you like it, thumbs down if you don't. Otherwise, leave. Sorry.
Thank you. Using these routes in the course of our normal daily activities puts our lives in danger. The city encourages walking and taking the max. This safety concern is in direct conflict of pedestrian-friendly Portland. There are often people loitering in the tunnel, making us feel unsafe and the need to take the risk of walking down the middle of the road to avoid the danger that coming into direct contact with these loitering people may present. Every week, that tunnel averages four to eight break-ins to vehicles. They come up Mill Street Terrace and break into our cars and homes. The people who loiter in the tunnel leave needles, broken glass, garbage, feces, and urine. Again, I emphasize that this is the only entrance/exit from our homes to other vital areas. We need more police to provide us safety and to be able to respond more quickly to this safety hazard. We need not just parking patrols, we need beat cops. We also need clearly-marked surveillance cameras for our safety in the tunnel. We need clearly posted no loitering or no overnight sleeping for our safety. We need pedestrian driver safety corridors for our safety in Goose Hollow. There's a social contract between the government and its citizens and this includes protection of all of the city's residents. They can no longer ignore the criminal component of the homeless. We need more police for safety. We need the no camping city ordinance upheld. A person who commits a crime should be held responsible and not be released from jail two hours later. A person who commits a crime should be held responsible and not be released from jail two hours later. Some of the homeless are becoming aggressive, more belligerent, bold, and entitled. This needs to be addressed. I end by saying, residents, again, residents of Goose Hollow do not feel protected nor represented in this problem. We have done our part and are requesting that you now listen and do your part to act. I urge city council members, as our elected representatives, to immediately act immediately. Provide more police, enforcing existing ordinances. Provide proper surveillance, proper lighting, and no loitering signage in identified areas of concern. Make us feel safe again.
Wrap it up, please. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Barron, I really appreciate your courage in speaking up. Thank you. And I'm sorry for the treatment that you've had.
It's all right. Our safety is a daily concern. Like even walking, I can't walk on the sidewalk.
As you were speaking, I could imagine walking through that tunnel. And that's the only-
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
As you were speaking, I could imagine walking through that tunnel. And it sounds like that's the only access in and out of your home.
There's glass, there's glass everywhere. There's needles everywhere. It smells of urine. And again, this is the only access that we have, the only access.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you for trying to tell us.
I'd also like to add that the hissing is really unappreciated.
I have asked, I have asked security to start asking people to leave.
It's really disappointing to me to have a woman sitting in front of us, regardless of whether or not I agree with what she thinks the remedy is to the problem, but a woman that feels unsafe in our community. As a woman that grew up here and has walked down these city streets, I can tell you I have been harassed and assaulted on multiple occasions. And it's not unreasonable for her to come here and share her experience and her concerns. So please just stop with the hissing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Liz. I'm the Community Wellness Coordinator for the Rosewood Initiative, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the East Portland Neighborhood Office. I'm a lifelong resident of East Portland, and I'm very familiar with how our community has been neglected due to a lack of equitable funding and resources from the city. Over the years, I've seen little improvement in the extreme displacement of the Portland community, which has caused a concentration of poverty, rampant food insecurity, and has increased preventable health and safety hazards in East Portland. EPNO, the East Portland Neighborhood Office, has gone above and beyond to help give a voice to all of us in East Portland and bridge our community members' resources, and not just for the homeowners who prescribe to the neighborhood associations. At the Rosewood Initiative, we were fortunate enough to receive one of EPNO's small grants to celebrate Mental Health Awareness Month. EPNO's grants provide strong and life-changing impacts for our community members. In the last 10 days, we have already served over 200 of our Rosewood community members, including 150 at our health fair where they connected to needed health services and completed on-the-spot screenings. 22 leaders within our Spanish-speaking community became certified in mental health first aid, equipping them to help others in crisis. 12 of our GRS Latinas learned about the importance of self-care. Nine renters learned how to protect themselves from predatory landlords. And eight parents learned how to support their teens' mental health. Without EPNO, none of this would have been possible. Because of this, I'm asking for the following three items. The first, provide equitable funding to EPNO by increasing their budget by $201,980. Increasing their funding will allow them to increase their capacity to support community groups in East Portland so that youth, people of color, and new community groups in East Portland have access to needed funding. The second, support the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability's request for a one-time funding of $135,000 to begin an East Portland quadrant plan similar to the Southwest Equitable Housing Strategy. And the final one, establish a 0.5% in city overhead funding to secure monies for each bureau so that they can actively fund interpretation, translation, childcare, and other accommodations to support equitable engagement in the city of Portland's decision-making.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Colleagues, I just want to point out, this is Liz who helped craft the proclamation, the wonderful proclamation we had on that Wednesday morning. This is the woman who basically wrote it. And she's, single-handedly put on that fair to have those amazing results. So thank you very much for your leadership.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. I'm Elizabeth Spanbauer, and thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for having me. I am a small business owner and an entrepreneur, and just a mom representing Hillside Community Center, and my sons go there. I am aware of the budget change for Hillside, and I'm very thankful for this. I hope this council will approve it so Hillside funding will continue. Hillside is so important to me and my family as well, as a surrounding community. Hillside Community Center is a place I found when I was desperately needing a place for my autistic son, Enzo, as well as my other son, Milo, to go there for after-school. Not just so I can work, but for the interaction with other peers. The people there were so great. Hillside offered us so many things that other centers do not. Enzo needs a full-time aide, and Hillside has that. In fact, his aide is also now his care provider, part-time at home. He also goes to all the summer camps. It is important to be a part of a place that keeps him engaged through the summer so that transition to school is, into fall, seems a lot less stressful for him. Hillside gave my son, Enzo, a chance to interact with other kids with special needs. His best friend, Neil, goes there too, and they have so much fun together. I'm hoping Hillside is around for many more years to come. Me, as a mother, depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All three of you, thank you for your testimony.
I'm going to read some more numbers. And when you come in, you can just line up in the back by the chairs. You don't have to come up here. The numbers are 1-4-2-1-1-1-9-4, and 1-4-6-1-0-2-2-0-2.
Good evening.
Hello, good evening. My name is Alexis Moyer. I'm 19 years old and the co-chair of the Multnomah Youth Commission, or MYC's Sustainability Committee. We're here today because the mayor's budget does not have Youth Pass written into it. We are disappointed to say that Portland Public Schools has already committed to filling in the gap for Youth Pass, even as they struggle to receive adequate state funding. PBS has an advantage in that they get reimbursed from the state for opting out of yellow buses, which is possible because of the transit investment in Portland as opposed to East Portland. Portland has a history of disinvestment from East County. Mayor, you have the power to change this and invest in East Portland youth. The nearly 4,000 youth who go to David Douglas and Park Rose deserve this program, which would cost approximately $600,000 and would cover all students for the transitional year, as opposed to last year where only partial students were able to receive the bus pass. This is not a lot of money compared to the individual impact that this program has on youth. This sets up youth to succeed. It costs, as you know, it costs more to build future shelters, to hire more cops, and other intervention efforts. Mayor, in your budget, you valued housing funding to get houseless, struggling people resources they need to stay off the streets. Youth Pass is that resource. There are youth surviving off this program that are at risk of being houseless and youth not counted under the Title X McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act who are currently houseless. I have organized with the Sustainability Committee for four years to keep this program. It's been frustrating that we have to come back every year and exemplify our time and resources when we have developed policy recommendations that address issues like youth safety at bus stops, around policing, like Trimate ensuring that bus drivers and fare ticketers are trained in racial and cultural competency. Let me say it again, I have organized for four years for Youth Pass while I have been followed home, harassed on the mats, at bus, at bus stops, you know, on the bus, at bus stops, while I've been threatened, while I've seen youth of color being targeted for so many things. There are many problems that youth, youth of color, queer youth, poor youth face in the community that we are unable to address because we are stuck every year advocating for the minimums, even gain access to our city. Council members, last year, you committed to directing the Portland Bureau of Transportation to study the cost of this program. You did not. You committed to bringing Trimate officials with power to the table with us, and you did not. You committed to working with us to find sustainable funding for Youth Pass, and you did not do that either until it was too late in the game. And now you are pulling the rug from under East County youth.
All right. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. My name is John Sherman, and I'm here on behalf of Transition Projects. I'd like to personally thank all of you for your continued work in our community. As a result of your investment in a home for everyone and in the work, and in the work of everyone on the ground, thousands of people avoided eviction and kept their homes last year. This year looks very bright. Somewhere around 5,000 people are projected to return to housing. And thousands will seek shelter and a safe place to sleep off the streets. As a person who has experienced homelessness in downtown Portland and other areas, I'm truly grateful and inspired by this news. Without shelter and a safe place to sleep at night, stability, in many cases, if not most, is nearly impossible. We must continue to find ways to provide shelter beds so that us as service providers, such as myself, can maintain healthy contact with our participants. Basically, what that means is if we can't find them, we can't help them. And so it's very helpful in the work that I do to be able to have some kind of, some kind of understanding of where the people are. TPI recognizes, appreciates, and asks that you continue to make the necessary investments towards making sure that we are able to provide flow-through services. This means exiting people from shelter and into housing. This is critical to ending homelessness. Rent assistance and placement support services make this possible.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Good evening. It's good to see you.
Hello. My name is Donna Hayes. The last time we talked, we walked down memory lane. I understand your short time in office as mayor, 16 months is not a long time to have your pain and so much suffering come up around you. As my mayor, my heart goes out to you. But as my police commissioner, I hold you in another bracket. As my police commissioner, your job is to hold your public safety personnel accountable, boss.
That's correct.
As commissioner, your job was to ask your public safety personnel what happened. Don Perkins is alive and Qantas Hayes is dead. On the same day, what is your answer? As commissioner, your job was to ask your public safety personnel what happened with Jesse Brockner wounded, Chase People wounded, and what was the difference with Doc Qantas Hayes dead? What is your answer? As commissioner, your job was to ask your public safety personnel why Sharon Brown is Officer Daryl Shaw's next victim. Why is he around? What is your answer? As your job, as commissioner, your job was to ask your public safety personnel why a summary execution was performed on John Ellafrid. What's your answer? As commissioner, your job was to ask the public safety personnel why did they shoot up exactly not working-class, unworking-class Laura Hearst for a man with a BB gun? What is your answer? Before you spend your money on a department that is not performing up to standard, be the police commissioner and ask, and get real-time answers, and present it to the people with correction. Just maybe the people won't give the mayor such a hard time about money for public safety. We will get a glimmer of accountability, and the mayor can sleep at night with confidence that his city and people are safe and running like a well-oiled machine. We already have too many cops and no justice, no answer. Correct the situation involving your cops. What is your answer? If you need that money to correct the police board, to follow the DOJ settlement, I say yes. But to hire more idiots, I say no.
Thank you, Donna. Appreciate it. It's good seeing you. Next three, please.
We're also looking for ticket number 1-1-4-9-9-6-2-0-6, and 1-5-3-1-2-4-0-8-8.
Good evening.
Hi. Should I start?
Sure. Please, thank you.
Hi, hello. I used to want to be a city commissioner, and then I've been here for an hour, and I'm like, yikes. So I have a lot of respect for you guys. Thank you for all the work you do. And thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I feel like I have a unique testimony to contribute because I was a teacher at Hillside for four years. And immediately prior to that, I was an assistant to the Executive Director of the Portland Parks Foundation, Linda Laviolette. So I have uncommon insight into the workings of Portland Parks and Rec. I've seen its budget from a macroscopic level at the foundation. And I've been impacted by it on a microscopic level, working at Hillside directly with young people. And I just wanted to take the brief time that I have with you guys to clear up a few misconceptions about Hillside that I feel are really important. There's a pervasive misconception that Hillside services mostly wealthy and affluent white people. And while it's true that there are some really nice-looking houses in its immediate vicinity, in my experience, Hillside is actually servicing a very diverse population whose needs would not be met elsewhere. Hillside has a longstanding reputation as a community center that understands children with special needs. I'm putting "special needs" in quotes because the truth of the matter is that Hillside, our core philosophy is that every child has special needs. Our job as educators or instructors is fundamentally about understanding what special needs every child needs in order to truly prosper and grow. And in that spirit, I was first hired at Hillside as an inclusion specialist. An inclusion specialist's job is to assist in a radical new approach to viewing kids with special needs. Instead of isolating or ostracizing them into a separate classroom, different from other children, thereby signaling that they are different or unwanted in society, the inclusion's program's main objective is to integrate them into mainstream classrooms and fund any extra staff that their needs might require. Hillside, for whatever reason, has been really successful in implementing this program. You've heard from people about this today. And that's why Hillside has the inarguable distinction of being a community center uniquely suited to welcome anybody who's different, neurodivergently or physically. And that's why, as a teacher, I had so many students from all over Portland. Because the truth of the matter is, and this is why I'm here, it needs to be understood and heard that Hillside doesn't just serve the Northwest neighborhood. It is the fact that people bring themselves and their children from all over Portland, all the quadrants, to benefit from the uncommonly inclusive nature of Hillside's programs.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Could you give us your name, please?
Oh, Avi Makaya.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony, especially the very first part. You got that spot on. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Jung, and I'm the Education Program Director at Community Alliance of Tenants, also known as CAT. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here to represent a lot of tenants that we advocate within for that aren't able to make it tonight because they have childcare needs. You know, they have jobs that they can't get away from. They have transportation issues that they can't get out here. And so I'm here to ask for continued funding support for our Tenant Protections Team, which is a culturally-specific program in partnership with SCI, ERCO, and APANO. And I'm here to share a testimony from a tenant who benefited from our program but wasn't able to make it tonight. And this is her letter. Dear Mayor and Commissioners, For the past year, I was living in an apartment with my three-year-old daughter with mold. The mold damaged our furniture and our clothes. I would verbally talk to landlord about my issues, and the landlord would say it was my responsibility. Not only did I have the mold, but I had rodents living in the wall, scratching and making horrifying noises. My three-year-old daughter was so afraid that she would always want to stay with her grandma instead. She would always cry, and she didn't want to come into our own home. Finally, the rodents ate a hole through the wall and came into the house, which was very scary and unsanitary. As you know, they carry germs, and my landlord still did nothing. But through the Tenant Protections Team program, I was able to learn how to fight for my tenant rights. They helped me write a letter asking for reduced rental value, which I did get, and was also connected with the Fair Housing Council and a lawyer, just in case the landlord did not comply. Thank you for being a champion and supporting this program. Tenant Protections Team helps all the tenants in Portland and gives us a chance to learn how to fight for our rights. I wouldn't have known what my rights were without the Tenant Protections Team program. Please continue to be a champion and support this program with continued stable funding. Thank you. LaShonda Adams.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. I'm Anna So, and I'm here representing Karenot Cops. Community and neighborhood safety cannot be achieved with increased policing. This funding must be invested in community programs such as increased housing, transportation initiatives such as Youth Pass, education, and community-derived and user-led services. We demand an immediate reduction in the taxpayer-funded Portland Police Bureau budget, not the proposed increase of $6 million. Portland is currently facing economic and social crises related to social services. While Portland Public Schools has Youth Pass in their budget, Youth Pass for East Portland School District is currently not included in the budget for the city of Portland for the 2018-19 fiscal year. Based on surveys, Youth Pass helps youth to travel not only to and from school, but also to access mental health support and other services. Youth Pass plays an important role in ensuring community wellness. While the PPB currently spends nearly $60,000 While the PPB currently spends nearly $600,000 per day, the total cost of the Youth Pass program at both East Portland School District High Schools, David Douglas and Park Rose, would be just over $610,000 for the entire year to provide free access to public transportation to about 3,900 youth in East Portland's school districts. The cost of funding Youth Pass for the East Portland School District's high school for the entire school year is just a little more than what the PPB spends in one day. The Portland Police Bureau City Council and new mayor-railers show a disregard for solutions that meet the economic, health, and social needs of Portland's communities of color by continuing to press for an increase in budget for policing. You need to invest in programs that provide vital services like Youth Pass for communities in East Portland. If you care about Black and Brown communities, folks with disabilities, healthless folks, and poor communities, you need to reject funding for more police officers and PPB who harass, intimidate, threaten, and kill. You can and must invest these funds in desperately needed life-affirming resources instead. Police will never be adequate or appropriate mental health responders. The budget requests an additional $1.9 million for service coordination and increases both police and clinician positions under the Portland Police Bureau provision of substance use and mental health services. The framework for these services is based on punitive and coercive measures rather than user-centered voluntary and supportive services.
Actually, it isn't.
This funding must be invested directly into community-based services.
Thank you guys for your time and your patience.
Thank you. Next three, please.
All right.
Everybody gets two minutes, and I've actually been pretty generous. Two minutes. When the, I told you right up front, when the light turns red, two minutes is up. I've been generous. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kendall. I use one name.
Thank you.
I'm worried about crime in Portland. The last time I saw you, I gave you a book called The New Jim Crow. I hope you've read it.
I have.
The budget proposal in raising funds for the Police Department does not seem to me to reflect a reading of that book. So I'd like to just say that the crime that I'm worried about in Portland is systemic crime. Systemic crime is extreme income inequality, mass incarceration, and white supremacy. That is the crime we need to be working on, not this petty stuff. Portland police harass homeless people in their tents, don riot gear for protests, and kill Black children for being out in the streets at night. Instead of hiring more police, please solve the problem of white-collar crime. Support initiatives like the Just Energy Transition that will take 1% -- just one -- of the profits of the richest corporations to weatherize the homes of the poor, to offer job training and other minority business support, and to diminish the effects of poverty. Who are the criminals that need policing? Corporate CEOs and billionaires have hoarded the wealth of the USA. From 1973 to 2016, US productivity went up 74%. The minimum wage went up 12%. Where did the 60% go? Hoarded wealth is why we don't have healthcare and mental healthcare for everyone in America. Hiring more police is blaming the poor, criminalizing the poor. Are police holding CEOs accountable? No. The Portland police serve the Portland Business Alliance and the corporate state. They harass and bully the poor. Half the people killed by police have disabilities. The victims of police violence are disproportionately people of color. In the US, there are 40.6 million people living below the poverty line, but the 400 wealthiest Americans hold 64% of the wealth. Please tax the rich and don't harass the poor.
Thank you.
Call some more numbers. Anyone wave? That was your ticket? You coming down? Reread some numbers.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Audrey Grieve. I live in southeast Portland and I'm a volunteer with the organization InLawSafe. I wanted to talk about the demands that we have as a community and feel that the only way to stop police violence is to disarm, defund, and dismantle the police. More police trainings, body cameras, or investigations without accountability will not stop police killings nor the everyday violence of policing that is overwhelmingly targeted towards Black, Brown, and poor communities in Portland. At least four of the officers involved in the shooting of John Elefritz were previously investigated for their extreme use of violence and in one case, the killing of Keaton Otis in 2010. We demand that an immediate reduction of the taxpayer-funded Portland Police Bureau budget, not the proposed increase of 6.7 million. Last year, the PPB was allocated almost $217 million and now they're asking for 6 million in addition to that figure. We want this money to go towards protecting youth, protecting Black and Brown people, and protecting the folks who really do feel insecure whether or not they're in a tunnel that has glass on the ground. There are people who have to sleep in those spaces. There are people who don't have any kind of security, a home to go to, a family to go to. So we ask and demand that you decrease this police funding. We also have the idea that police will never be an adequate or appropriate mental health response. The budget really requests an additional $1.9 million for service coordination and increases in both police and clinician positions under the Portland Priory Police Bureau for provision of substance use and mental health services. The framework for these services is based in punitive and coercive measures rather than user-centered voluntary and supportive services. This month's funding must be invested directly into community-based services, not contingent on police interaction.
Commissioner Fritz.
Thank you for your time.
So just for, that seems to be a recurrent theme, and I have followed the Service Coordination Team. It's used to be run by the Volunteers of America. It's now run by Central City Concern. It's residential care by licensed medical professionals. So it's not punitive.
That's your opinion.
Well, that's the facts. Good evening.
Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Jane Mott and I'm president of the Portland U.S.A. Sister City Association. And thank you for allowing us to talk to you today. I am here to represent basically nine sister cities in Portland. And we are here to ask that you look at the international relations position within the Office of Government Relations. In the past year, we celebrated our 60th anniversary with, 30th anniversary with Portland U.S.A. And on Sunday, I go to U.S.A. to celebrate their 12th anniversary as a rose festival. And they are sending a delegation of five to come here in June to celebrate our rose festival. We have a really good storied position of 30 years of delegations coming back and forth. In order for us to do the work as a sister city, we rely on that position to be able to do the city-to-city and international government-to-government relationship from interpretation to writing, to be able to do the proclamations. So this position is very important to us as a sister city, and we appreciate the work that Cheeto did last year for us for our 60-year, 30-year anniversary, and then also now Sydney, the new one that's here, is doing a great job. So we just wanted to say we would like you to save that position. It is definitely something that, it's our first line of communication to the mayor's office, and they do a phenomenal job. And I also wanted to say thank you for allowing Elizabeth Edwards to go with us last year to celebrate the 30, their 30-year anniversary as a metropolitan city. And it was wonderful for her to have that representation of the city of Portland. That was the highest level going to U.S.A. in our 30-year representation. So thank you very much.
Very cool.
So can I ask a question while you're here?
Oh, sure.
Because I guess we just lost Andrew Scott, but are you asking us to protect existing funding or has there been a cut proposed in the budget?
We're asking you to protect that position as the associate direct, we call her the Associate Director of the International Relations Position.
Is there a proposed cut in the mayor's proposed budget? Or you're just asking?
It is our understanding that position could be cut, and it would be critical to the nine sister cities for us to keep that position.
Okay, so when Andrew Scott comes back, we'll ask him the status of that position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, and thanks for your hard work.
Thank you.
On behalf of the sister cities, thank you. Can I just get a show of hands how many people have signed up who haven't spoken yet, just so we can get a, so one, two, three, four, seven, eight, nine, 12.
Not too bad.
Thank you. Very good. It's about 16-ish. Pretty good. Good evening.
Sorry. Good evening. Hello, I am Kalandra Anderson and I am representing Lenz Youth Initiative. I'm here to speak about the continuous struggle and fight that me and my fellow youth have had to endure for years. As a youth that lives in low income and does not have a car, I am dependent on Youth Pass that I am given, and I am in constant stress that one day I will be unable to go to a job that decides whether or not I pay my rent. I am in constant stress that one day I will not be able to attend school just because the Youth Pass is not given to me and decide my future for the rest of my life. My Youth Pass is the deciding factor of whether I get to school, my job, the hospital, or anywhere I need to go. But instead, I am wasting my youth worrying about whether or not I can get to school and the opportunity that I am given to free, the free opportunity that I am given to go to school for free, but I need to pay for my access to get there. So I ask, instead of wasting our limited budget on something like policing youth that we don't need or extra wasted budget that we don't need on youth that you police constantly already, I ask can you pay for something that I actually need to get to school and to get anywhere that I need to get at all? That's it.
Thank you.
I have a question. So did you, did you just start getting the Youth Pass this year?
My school, I have actually not been. I've, okay, so my middle school did not have Youth Passes. I had to pay to ride trimit myself to get to my middle school, and when I got into high school, I did have Youth Pass, but it's only been for two years.
And which school do you go to?
I go to Benton right now, but I've, I've transferred schools.
Ah, right.
Yes. And the only way you could get a Youth Pass is if you went through an extenuous process of filling out paper and registering yourself as someone who gets free and reduced lunch.
Right.
So, yeah.
Thank you for explaining. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate your being here. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of East Portland Neighborhood Office, and the reason why I am testifying on their behalf is this reason. Mayor, when you have layers of barriers, success is very difficult. When language is a barrier, limited information is a barrier, your skin is barrier to you and your country of origin and your name and everything, success is very difficult. But that doesn't mean that the hope is over. So what we did as a community, I'm from, my name is Mohammed Ali. I am from Somali community. I live in southeast Poland. On 14th and 14th and 15th last year, we just get organized and connected leadership and civic engagement and community health education because those were our priorities. The reason why we did that is because there are so many refugees and immigrants who live here, legally came to this country, but unable to get to pass the immigration test. And have been here for like seven years and did not even get passport because it's very difficult. Language is a big problem. We have so many people who are youth citizens but are not voting because they don't really understand the importance of voting. So we thought it's very important for us to educate community, to reach out and sensitize. So that is what we have been doing. Health education, we, we are talking about mental health. We have refugees who have lived in Kenya or other places 10 years or 10-plus years without its trauma, came here and now the system is very difficult. If you go to social school, to office, you have to brush computers. It's very difficult. So all this, while we have many problems, we have unique problems, and each community is different. And so to just help our community, educate on stigma about mental health and to avoid people going into emergency unnecessarily, what we are doing was just reach out community and educate them on the importance of exercise. If they feel sick, if their loved one is having mental issues, you don't have to shay. Just go to the hospital, talk to the doctor. Those are very important. The reason why I'm asking EPOP to be supported, they give us a grant to help us reach those programs, and I'm asking if they can be supported with 200, 200, 201, 200, 201,000, 800, 980,000 with their current program so that at least they can reach out and help more communities to deliver the program. That will be very helpful.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm here to strongly support the proposed increase in funding for the ONI graffiti abatement program. Despite a tiny staff and a relatively small budget, the program has been a success. It gleaned data from the PDX Reporter App, which has been very effective, and it also works with citizen volunteer organizations and private sector businesses such as graffiti removal services that has gotten some good press recently. But we need to do more. Graffiti continues to be a problem and it continues to increase in our city with devastating downstream effects, which I won't go into detail about here. We do need to get ahead of the problem in order to assure the prosperity, safety, livability of our beloved and beautiful city. My hope is that increased resources will not simply lead to more staffing. We can do a better job of coordinating volunteer efforts across the city. Richmond Tagbusters out of the Richmond Neighborhood Association is a great example, and they can serve as a model for all neighborhood associations to, to show up and volunteer to abate graffiti. Finally, enforcement of existing ordinances that require property owners to take care of graffiti on their own property should be prioritized. So in conclusion, I urge you to vote in favor of additional resources for the graffiti abatement program. It's done a good job and it can do a much better job with increased resources. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Could you give us your name, please?
Sorry. Oh, I'm Pat Brunette. Live and work in Portland.
And I'm just curious, what is it that Catrice makes you so passionate about? Because she came to the previous budget forum. What is it that, about graffiti that makes you so concerned?
Well, aside from the negative effects, it, which include decreased livability, negative impacts on tourism, negative effects on business activities, I think it strikes at the heart and soul of our city. And in the same way, we don't want to allow people to live in bad conditions and tolerate homelessness, I think we should not tolerate graffiti that essentially is making our city less, less livable and actually creates a negative image across the country and across the world. I heard a great quote, that the difference between art and graffiti is permission.
Marsha Dennis. No, Marsha Dennis, you create that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'd like a chance to respond as the Commissioner, usually in charge of graffiti abatement, although that privilege goes to the mayor right now. We are not increasing staff. I haven't requested an increase in staff. We've been using our funding more efficiently with the way that we contract with abatement companies, and we actually do mobilize a substantial amount of volunteers across the city through our neighborhood coalitions and neighborhood associations. I'm a former small business owner. I've spent a few thousand dollars probably removing graffiti from my own business, so I certainly sympathize with the impact on business, small business owners and property owners. But I would argue with your definition of graffiti personally, and I'm also committed to the city having a pretty enlightened policy when it comes to street art. So we're also looking at expanding opportunities for murals, possibly graffiti walls, which, you know, we're not going to appeal to everyone since part of the thrill of graffiti is the fact that it's against the law. But thank you, and we're not cutting the budget. I don't need a response.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I've been asked to identify who up in the balcony would still like to testify. We've any raised hands? I can't see. Can someone confirm?
You've got on this side, one, two, three.
Okay, we have enough room down here. Want to come on down?
Four. Good evening.
Good evening. Go ahead. Hello, good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. My name is Kenisha Oberstreet. I am a nine-year law enforcement veteran, and I understand the police budget. I am a small business owner, consulting business owner. I currently work with one of the Assistant US Attorneys here in Portland because my passion is consulting with the correctional facilities. With having nine years of law enforcement experience... experience. I also have a plan for the city of Portland from... For the police, from where I came from, it's very effective, and I have the statistics. Once I'm at the table, I will be more than welcome to share all of my potatoes.
Agreed.
But at this point right now, I know it's hard for civilians to understand from a law enforcement standpoint what we go through and what we see, whether you're in the jail or whether you're on the street. Mental health needs to go through the counties, not the police budget, because we don't... We are not trained to be mental health. We are trained to assess and respond at what's ahead, what's in front of us. So, holding the counties responsible and using their budget to establish mental health, I think that's where it's at, and that's where it should be. But I am open to sitting with you all, with my small business, consulting with DOJ. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Commissioner Daly, did you have a comment? Thank you for being here. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Addison Bates, and I work in outreach for an education organization in northeast Portland. I was on my way home the night of John Andrew Alfred's death. I got out because I saw about eight cop cars. When I asked a man on the street near the scene what happened, he told me he was in the room where that man was killed. His words were that the man, John, had cut himself in the neck and was stumbling towards the officers when they tear gassed him, shot rubber bullets, and then finally shot him. The cop I talked to, who was one of the 12 cop witnesses, told me that they had tried everything to de-escalate with the rubber bullets and tear gas, and at that point, there were no other options. I asked him about disarming the man, considering he was disoriented by the tear gas, the rubber bullets, and bleeding out of his neck. He said the officers were scared for their lives. He agreed that what happened was really sad, but echoed what Ted Wheeler said earlier this evening. Society had already failed him. We should not be increasing the money for more armed officers. We should be using all extra money to create infrastructure to support our community feeling like they have to call 911 less. If your daughter was going through... Oh, this is separate. Okay. If your daughter was going through a mental health crisis and was robbed of all of her money and was living in her own urine, would you want her to be persecuted? Or would you want them to be provided support and love while they survive some of the hardest moments of their lives? On a separate note, considering that many of those who live in East County used to live near the river but were moved out, the youth that is over there should not face any more funding cuts. They have been displaced, and now in the homes that they've been forced to will not have the basic mobility to continue to visit family and places where their history resides. With regards to schools being able to pay for the bus passes, I was calling East Portland Schools in the Gresham-San Barlow District today to invite them to attend a free middle school summit for underprivileged youth, and they told me that they did not have the money to transport one bus full of kids to a free summit.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Hen de Savie. I'm a community member. Police don't protect anyone. By their nature, they are reactive and not proactive. They don't prevent crime with housing respect, mental health care, education, but instead brutalize, criminalize, and imprison the poor people of color and people of other marginalized identities. Many communities are already doing the work to keep themselves safe, oftentimes keep themselves safe from the police. I've seen this count time and time and time again. They're not being funded, they're not giving the resources, but they're still doing that work, and we need to put the money there. And I'm not saying that police are bad people, but I am saying that there are no good police. It's because the purpose of the police is to be the militarized arm of the state, the continued settler colony, and the federal 1033 program funnels billions of dollars in military-grade weapons into police all across the country, which the Portland police themselves repeatedly use on its citizens. Shock bang grenades, guns used on citizens' murders, even just a few weeks... Month ago or something. And the Portland government mandates that people in prison... This is actually an Oregon state law, but mandates that people in prison, which are overwhelmingly disproportionately Black and Indigenous, have their labor exploited. They're forced to work for very little pay. And one of these functions is for imprisoned people to be used, to be exploited, to displace unhoused communities. This is a practice I've actually come and talked to your officials about repeatedly. And one of... A couple of your officials called it slavery, and I quote, "Not a necessary evil, but a convenient evil." And this is the function of white supremacy in the United States, and this is something that the Portland government is a part of. You need to work to change this by disarming the police, decreasing police, and dismantling the police, as well as prisons. The council's solution is more police, which puts you on the same side with neo-Nazis, the Trump campaign, and everyone who I believe you don't want to be associated with. The neoliberal argument is that with better training, it would be better, but actually, that's the whole good cop, bad cop argument. I can stop right now, but basically, the purpose of the police will continue to be oppressive, and so even if you are a good person, your job will require you to oppress people. And so regardless of better training, the force and purpose of the police is oppressive, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, all three of you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your patience.
I'd like to thank you, Mayor, Council, and Commissioner. My name is Vaite Tautua, a secretary for the Tongan community. And I'm here to support the East Portland Neighborhood Office. The Tongan community are growing now in State of Oregon. Most of the Tongan are moved to the northeast, to the East Portland. Our Tongan community are very talented people. For women, they did sewing, quilt, and sell to earn money, but we have no space, and then we need help with the place so we can use it. The men, the Tongan men community, they are very hardworking, doing construction, and they need help with trying to get license. And our youth, their talent, are doing rugby, football. And right now, they're almost a winner in every state, which is we brought off. They are from State of Oregon. But because of East Portland Neighborhood Office, they are there, they support us, we fund. But sometimes, it's not enough, but we're just thankful for anything that they gave us to help our community. This is our third year at Tongan Day. And then we getting to increase, and then we ask them for help, which we success. They help us, but it's not really enough. Please, do not cut their fund. We need more fund for them to help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for your testimony. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, for the opportunity for us to be here today, to be able to talk and see you guys face to face. It's a blessing for me to be here today. I'm with... My name is Losipe Makasini. I'm from the Tongan community, too. We are here, just like she mentioned, to support the East Portland Neighborhood Office. So, we are asking if you guys could help, you know, funding them for more money to help our community, and maybe they might hire me someday, hopefully. But we are growing, and we need help, especially... We are moving from North Portland, and, you know, we used to live there, and northeast to the east side, so... And we are growing, and we just need help to fund some of the program that we ask for help, to help us with our needs in our community, to be better... To be a better community, to help Oregon grow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your testimony. Good evening.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner. My name is Kaleni Fuzitua. I'm from the Tongan community. I am also a cell community engagement liaison for the Tongan community. So happy to be here. As you notice, we have two aunties, two mothers from our community voicing their support with East Portland Neighborhood Office. It's because East Portland Neighborhood Office is the one that's helping us, they're the one coming to us. It's not... We didn't look for them. They looked for us and found us, and they gave us resources and helped us along the way in how they get the grant and so forth. Vaite mentioned that we have a Tongan Day. That's part of the support from East Portland Neighborhood Office, and we support, and we urge you to continue funding for that office. Also, we want to voice our support from the Tongan community for Portland Parks and Rec Community Garden Program. That's helping us a lot because we come from an island where we grow what we consume, and then here we go and buy processed food and so forth. Just give us opportunity to have multi-generation working together and building family bonding and so forth on the weekend. Also, we are from a underrepresented, underserved community of color, and we are here to support the Portland Police, continue funding for the police. We have had a community gathering with the police for three years, and that has brought new light to us to see what they're doing, what they're struggling with, with lack of funding. So we are here to support Portland Police as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, all three of you, for your testimony. Good evening.
Good evening. I have my... What I'm going to say on my phone.
Sure.
My name's John. I'm an organizer with Oregon Recovers, not representing them though. I've been in recovery for 11-plus years. I'm a former addictions counselor and recovery peer mentor. I have worked with hundreds and interacted with thousands of addicts, clean and not clean. I have personal experience with addiction and understand the struggles that come with that. Locking me up over and over again didn't get me clean. Treatment services in a loving recovery community did. A study a few years back showed, I believe it was about a decade ago, showed that substance abuse costs Oregonians almost $6 billion a year. Most crimes are tied to untreated addiction, and many others due to untreated mental illness and lack of basic needs. You say you know we need to address the root causes of these problems, but more police directly contradicts that statement. Many studies have shown that more patrolling does not decrease crime. We need to look at why the police are overworked instead of just spending more money on police that wouldn't actually make our community safer. They shouldn't be dealing with individuals in mental health crisis, they shouldn't be dealing with the houseless, they shouldn't be dealing with protecting property like being security for the Apple Store. The police need to be working when they are on the clock, and they should be held accountable when they aren't. The police culture and their code of silence must be broken. More police won't do that. I was just at a peaceful anti-war protest where, again, their time and our money was wasted on suiting them up and right here and sending them out. Police are not the answer to our problems. We need actual solutions. We live in a state that have some of the worst access to addictions and mental health treatment, actually rated last... In the last few years, some of the highest adolescent substance abuse rates, a failing foster care system, and we are far from leaders in solving the problem of poverty, income inequality, homelessness, and mass incarceration. John Alfreds, which was just killed recently by the police, was actually in recovery for approximately a year. He had relapsed shortly before this, before his mental breakdown that ended in his killing by Portland Police. I've dealt with people in psychosis by myself unarmed a few times, and never did I feel like I needed to call the police. There was actually a situation where I witnessed a black man throw a woman around on the streets, and I felt like I couldn't call the police. I had to deal with it myself because I didn't want them to show up and kill the guy. So, cops don't make me feel safe. I don't believe they're going to create safety. So we need to start addressing these problems, the actual problems, not throwing police on it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Wheeler and council members, appreciate the opportunity. My name's Jim Etzel. I'm a resident in North Portland and the CEO of the Oregon Sports Authority. We're a nonprofit that brings sports events and so forth to our community to enhance the economic benefit for our community. We also do a lot of work with underserved youth and operate programs throughout the state to get kids physically active, which is a critical thing for the future of our youngest generation. We're proud to serve the city as a partner. We appreciate your support of the... And how you acknowledge and embrace the importance of sports tourism to our community. Public safety is an essential element for the visitor experience, not just around sports events, but for all tourism. And there's concerns that we have heard around recent events over the last couple of years. Most recently, we hosted the 2018 U.S. Synchronized World Figure Skating Championships. There was over 2,000 skaters that came from around the country along with family, friends, coaches, and sports staff. Throughout the five days that they were here, we heard numerous concerns about how they felt in downtown Portland in February, just safety in operating and moving around the city. The event itself was a huge success. U.S. Figure Skating acknowledged it was the best championship they've had in 35 years, and Portland and the community was a great host, but there was this underlying concern about safety in our community. Portland Police, they serve critical roles around all our public events, not just NCAA basketball tournaments, or MLS All-Star, or World Indoor Track and Field Championships, but all of our running, cycling, and other community events. And they're a critical piece to the success of those, and those... All those events create significant economic and charitable impact for our community. So we see it as a very important piece. We recognize that hiring additional officers is simply one component, and it's of a comprehensive safety plan, but in our view, is an essential one. We appreciate all your support and leadership on this issue.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Molly Campbell. I am a nurse and a PhD student at Oregon Health and Science University, and today I speak on behalf of OHSU Students Against Gun Violence. The views of our group do not reflect those of the institution of OHSU. As future healthcare professionals, we oppose the proposed Portland Police Bureau's budget increase. Instead, we support investment in community building and life-affirming projects like affordable housing, support for our communities of color, and funding for mental health crisis outreach workers that is not funneled through the police bureau. We see two major issues with the increased police funding at the expense of other investments. First, the Portland Police disproportionately target our communities of color. If we increase the number of armed police in our communities, we will increase police violence against people of color. Second, Portland Police are inappropriate as first responders to our community members experiencing a mental health crisis. An armed police presence results in excessive use of force on people with mental illness, as evidenced by the recent murder of John Eli Fritz. The 2012 Department of Justice report found that the Portland Police Bureau engages in a pattern and practice of using excessive force on individuals with actual or perceived mental illness, demonstrating the systemic nature of this problem. As future healthcare professionals, we are committed to the fundamental principle, first do no harm. We believe that increasing the police presence in our communities will result in increased harm. We respectfully request that the Portland City Commissioners and our Mayor Ted Wheeler join us in our commitment to the principle of do no harm by investing our city dollars into life-affirming and community-building city projects.
Thank you. Appreciate all three of you. All four, in this case. This is the last panel? Very good. Thank you. You get the last word. Oh, sorry. You get the second to the last word.
And if there's anybody else who is hoping to speak and hasn't yet, please come and I explain yourselves to the budget people.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Gail Hoffnagle. I'm the Vice President of Smile and the Chair of the Friends of Sel... I think the Park Bureau is at a crossroads where we can make some exciting inroads. I know that you're going to start a national search for a new director, and as a former Park Bureau employee back when the dinosaurs were on the earth, the Park Bureau used to be, the top people in management used to be recreation people, and over the years it's switched so that it's become more park and planning people. And I'm hoping that in your search that you will look for someone who understands the value of public recreation, because I think that voice is sort of being lost as time goes on, partly because I know that there is a huge need for parks, open spaces, recreation facilities, and it seems like it would be logical to have someone come in that knows funding source, you know, funding, all that kind of stuff. But the heart of the Portland Park Bureau really is the recreation program, and I think that part has been, it's not being heard, but tonight you heard it over and over again when people were saying, "We need the community center," because at the very basis of it, people are looking for connection, and being able to connect with other people in your community really solves a lot of problems, and it helps people to solve problems that other people are having within their community. So I'm not gonna use my whole two minutes, but I'm very thankful, and I hope that you will keep the Friends of Community Centers involved in this new process that you're going to have. Thank you so much.
So you couldn't see, but behind you, your comments about community connections and having that space and those opportunities was very, very well received.
Lots of thumbs up.
Yeah.
And I would've done it too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was lovely.
Good evening.
Hello. Hi. My name is Mical Johannes, and I, for the past year, have been volunteering at a local prison, Columbia River Correctional Institute, and there I saw personally the impact that the lack of investment in education, affordable housing, and mental health care has had on underserved communities and has pushed many people into the criminal justice system. So we don't get to hear the voices of incarcerated people, and so I'm here to read a statement from someone who's gonna be back in the community to his family very soon. So, start there. So, "Why spend money on more police when the police we have are out of control? For example, the recent killing of a man inside the City Team Homeless Shelter. Why not spend the money in efforts to help and better understand our community instead of working towards incarcerating it? The funds could be better used towards helping the homeless, people with mental health and drug addiction issues. They could also be used to train the current officers how to better deal with Portland residents who may be experiencing housing issues, drug addiction, or mental health issues, as well as non-lethal methods of policing instead of being so quick to shoot people or quick to hire another cop. In my experience, if I had help to deal with my homelessness and drug addiction in a more permanent way, then I would feel that, then I would be well on my way to being a productive member of society and contributing something positive to my community, not wasting me and my family's time in prison. It makes me sick to my stomach to think of money going towards more police instead of towards truly helping the people of Portland. Let's help the people of Portland, not police them."
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you for speaking for somebody who can't speak for themselves and for volunteering. I appreciate that.
Well, he can speak for himself, but we're just not listening.
Well, you were here to voice his, since he was not able to be here. Thank you.
Counsel, my name is Maya Rinta. I'm here on behalf of the National Lawyers Guild Portland Chapter and the Lewis and Clark Law School Student Chapter. We stand in support of the Care Not Cops Mental Health Care Not Policing Campaign and urge City Council to reject the fiscal year 1819 Portland Police Budget as proposed. This budget represents the further criminalization of unhoused people in the name of livability, the implementation of a restyled broken windows model of community policing, which disproportionately targets poor communities, black communities, and other communities of color. This budget also represents a dangerous increased investment in the failed practice of using police to respond to people experiencing mental health crises. The enhanced, or the additional funds for enhancing the police response to mental health crises, which is a practice that has been proven not only to be inadequate and inappropriate, but also inhumane. This further investment in funds is particularly unconscionable in light of the recent police killing of John Elefritz, as you've heard tonight, inside of a shelter. There's no indication that further funds for police would improve the situation, and a recent review of the Police Bureau found no difference in arrests between officers with or without the enhanced crisis intervention and training. Furthermore, the Mental Health Association of Portland found that the average number of police shootings has stayed the same or increased since the Department of Justice settlement agreement. We support the Care Not Cops campaign call to decouple mental health crisis response from policing and instead invest in life-affirming responses and resources, including mental health services, health care, and funding for individuals and organizations already doing the work and that have existing relationship with targeted and vulnerable populations. A budget is a moral document. Rather than adding 49 sworn officers and providing an additional $6 million in this budget, we call on City Council to reject the proposed budget and instead divert these resources and invest them into the things that truly keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more, one more person? One more group? Very good. And then we're done. Thank you. The list is closed. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. I wasn't originally planning to speak this evening, but I wanted to introduce one issue that we haven't heard from tonight, and that is the issue of fully funding and implementing the policy recommendations from the Sanctuary City Task Force. We know that this administration, the Trump administration, will do anything that it can to deport and criminalize and marginalize undocumented people in this country. We know that they are ending, doing everything that they can to end the DACA program, as well as the TPS program, which provides protection for people from many countries around the world, not only from Latin American countries, but also from countries like Nepal, Haiti, and countries in Africa. We know that these are some of the most vulnerable members of our community, as well as some of the most hard-working members of our community, and if this city wants to be serious about calling itself a sanctuary city, then we must do everything in our power, including in this budget, to protect those members of our community and make them feel truly included.
So Commissioner Udaley, would you like to speak a little bit about the program that is funded at a $500,000 level in the proposed budget?
Thank you for that testimony. The two made- So I have a little bit- Oh, sorry. I thought you were done. -in addition. And I thank you for your support, and I would encourage you to go back to the original recommendations from the task force, which include quite some additional features. But I also wanted to say that the other day I was standing with other members of the community in front of the ICE building on McAdam Street as a father in the community, Jose, had been picked up that morning. Now, how did ICE target him? A couple of days before, he had been arrested by the Portland Police Bureau, and a couple of days later, federal ICE agents, who are not supposed to be, having the cooperation of the Portland Police Bureau, showed up at his home to detain him and ultimately ship him off to the Northwest Tacoma Detention Facility. So in addition to budgeting for full legal protection for immigrants in this city, we also need to make absolutely sure that every city bureau is complying with the Sanctuary City policy, as well as assigned staff to look into how to provide additional teeth and enforcement into those policies to make sure that this city is not cooperating with federal law enforcement on immigration issues, and that includes withdrawing from the Joint Terrorism Task Force. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Excuse me, can we just have your name for the record, please?
My name is Juno Suarez.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. My name is Tom Karwaki, and I'm representing the University Park Neighborhood Association's Board, which would like to thank you for including additional funds in the ONI for graffiti abatement, disability equity indicators data collection, and adding $30,000 for the East Portland Neighborhood Office. However, we think that Barack Obama got it right, communities created by addition, not subtraction, and that you should fully fund the East Portland Office at a full $110,000 that was requested, and not try to subtract it from all the other neighborhood coalitions. And particularly from North Portland, as the representative for the P-BOT Budget Advisory Committee, we want to thank the mayor for including the $650,000 for the Columbia Boulevard Crossing, which Tina Kotek had gotten, also for the state, and also for the ADA curb cuts, although I think this is just a down payment, and the numbers that we saw is much, much greater, and I think that would be a big issue that you might want to start talking to a lot more people about, because they don't understand it.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Shayna Pomerantz. I'm here tonight as a member of the Human Rights, Equity and Human Rights Budget Advisory Committee. And without being redundant of a lot of the concerns that have already been expressed, which I agree with, I wanted to point something else out based on the budget allocation for more policing in the city. My concern specifically is that there are already resources within the city that are not being allocated, namely through the training that's offered through equity and human rights that could potentially, through this funding, could actually better train police officers in the community. There's many resources through the community partnerships with ONI, without getting into budgetary issues there, that's not my forte, but I see that the city has tremendous resources that it's not allocating. When I listened to your State of the City address, you talked about housing as being a big concern and developing new housing projects, and there's obviously a correlation between housing and criminalization within the community. And I wrote this down. I wanted to offer a recommended reading, "The Color of Law" by Richard Rothstein, and he specifically came to Oregon with the Fair Housing Act 50th anniversary and talked about the correlation between housing and criminalization. So I think looking at that in these plans, which I think makes sense, but adding more police does not. It doesn't help the community. I'm hearing about issues with budget cuts for transportation, for the youth, it's summertime, it's about to be hot, we need jobs, we need other positive things in the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Everybody, thank you very much. This is very thoughtful testimony. It was excellent, as I always expect from the people of Portland. It was great. Thank you. We are adjourned. No, Mayor, we need to continue the hearing to next Wednesday. Oh, sorry. I screwed up. I had this thing, here we are. So, the meeting for the Budget Committee is continued to Tuesday, May 14, at 10:00 a.m. in the council chambers at City Call here. Be there. Thank you. Now we're adjourned.
Is it Tuesday or Monday? Don't we have a budget?